Glad I brought my.
I'm glad that's working now.
Yeah, but no, this is for my half hour segments. Okay, we're ready? Welcome back, and we have sound. Thanks to Maureen Carney and David Murphy for fixing the sound system. Talk about hands-on government. All right, well, this is the forum for the candidates for city council from Ward 5. To my left, I'd like to introduce Kathleen Silva and to her left, David Murphy. And we have Patty Shaughnessy asking questions. And first to speak tonight will be Kathleen, or do you like Kathy?
Doesn't matter.
Would you tell us about yourself?
Sure. I would like to thank the League of Women Voters and the Council on Aging for putting on this forum and all of you for attention. Thank you. I'm Kathleen Silva, and my son and daughter and I have resided in the Bay State area of Florence since 1989. This is my first run for public office, and for the past five months, I've used every hour of my free time to take a crash course in Northampton government, trying to learn everything I can about how Northampton works and how sometimes it doesn't work. I want the honor and the privilege to work even harder for you as your Ward 5 city councillor. I think Northampton might be a paradise in America. If the generation that came before us gave us a key to paradise, we would have a responsibility to make sure Northampton would still be a paradise when it came our turn to hand our key, our turn to hand the keys to our grown-up children. In every decision that I will have to make on the council, if I am not sure which way to vote, that responsibility will be my guide. We may not always agree, but you will always know where I stand. If elected, I will answer my phone and respond very early in the morning, late into the evening, and even during weekend blizzards to problems, emergencies, threats to safety, and assaults on peace and quiet, which some of my neighbors are now experiencing. If you are down in your basement pumping out six inches of water, I want the right to be down in your basement with you. If you think your area of Ward 5 is less safe than others, I want to work to bring an equal sense so that you and your families are as equally safe as other neighborhoods. If it takes phoning other agencies to get involved, that is what I will do, and I will hold them accountable. I've said this every time I've had the privilege to, that I believe the biggest challenge for our city is to find a way for our working families, senior residents, and disabled individuals to continue to afford to live here. When it comes time for me to vote on the council, as far as I am concerned, a lifetime of hard work in providing love and family for kids earns our citizens the right to be able to keep living in paradise. National, state, and local issues impact us all in many ways. If elected, I'll be part of your statewide political community, sharing with state representatives and senators on how the residents in Ward 5 think about issues. They will know how we want them to vote in Boston on issues such as same-sex marriages. An elected official's responsibility is to represent those that elect her, whether she agrees with the constituents or not. I am dedicated and honest. I will work hard for you and on your behalf, and always with your input first and foremost. Please vote for me, Kathleen Silva, on November 8th, and allow me to be your voice on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Well, thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is David Murphy, and I'm a candidate for Ward 5 City Council. I grew up in Northampton, a lifelong resident, attended Northampton Public Schools, attended this school in the 60s when it was also brand-new. Was a 1973 graduate of Northampton High School. Went on to Emerson College in Boston, where I'm an honors graduate with a science degree in communications, which did come in handy this evening, fixing a few wires. And I currently am the broker-owner of my family's business. I'm third-generation, the Murphys Realtors, and I'm also a real estate appraiser. My background in volunteering for city activities goes back 20 years, where I started on, believe it or not, the Cable Television Commission, when we made the determination to grant the first franchise for cable TV in Northampton, and then served on that committee for two terms, was a member of the Housing Partnership dealing with housing issues. I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Downtown Architectural District, involved in preservation for downtown, the Elm Street Historic District that's involved with preserving the Elm Street corridor from the gates of Smith College up to Child's Park. And I'm a member of the Board of Assessors, which is a source of tremendous insight into the financial capacities, income potential, and distribution of the tax burden within the city of Northampton. I guess I should also tell you, since I was doing some wiring earlier, I also spent some of that time in that 20-year period, working for the three major television networks, and received an Emmy in 1997 for my work on the ESPN Extreme games, and ended that career in Sydney, Australia in 2000 as a technical manager for NBC Sports. So, that's where the wire fixing capacity comes from. As for my hopes as a city councillor, it's to give back to the community that I grew up in. I grew up in Florence. I remember Florence Grammar School and my teachers there, my friends that are able to still be business people in Florence Center and run their family businesses, and what a wonderful place Ward 5 is to live and work. And I look forward to the opportunity of representing my friends and neighbors and using my knowledge and experience in city government to make Ward 5 an even better place to live and work. So I'd appreciate your vote and the chance to represent you on the city council. Thank you.
Thank you both. And David, you'll answer the first question. What would your top goal be if elected to city council?
We talked about this the last time we got together, and this is something that people talk to me about whenever I'm around the ward, and that is the tax burden in the city and what they individually have to pay to continue to maintain their homes and live in the city of Northampton. And it's my feeling that we need to work very, very hard to expand the commercial tax base in the city to provide relief to the residents' tax burden. I think it was mentioned earlier that the split between commercial and residential is approaching 80/20. There was a time when it was closer to 70/30. There was another 10% of the burden paid by the commercial side, and I think it's very important that we work hard to build that out, not for the benefit of the commercial people, but for the benefit of the residential taxpayers who have to bear the burden and pay a larger share of what it costs to run the city. It's very important that people know we build that out to help relieve the burden on the residential taxpayer. We have space to do that. We have space to develop on King Street. We have business park zoning that goes out Route 10 to East Hampton that needs a sewer line to develop, and we have the former Northampton State Hospital grounds that we can develop, the intent of which is all to reduce the burden on the residential taxpayer within the city of Northampton. That is the overwhelming, most popular topic that people talk to me about, is the cost of living in the city of Northampton and the cost of supporting city government, which will only increase with the water plant when we build that. We've got to diversify our tax base to give some relief to the residential taxpayer.
Kathy, what would your goal, top priority goal, be if elected?
Well, there's two goals, actually, I would like to work on if I'm elected, and one is to somehow work with city council and the mayor, because I would only be one of nine people on the city council, to figure out how to keep people's affordability affordable here in Northampton. Going door-to-door, I have met a tremendous amount of people, some really dynamite people, had some great conversations, and people's concerns are their continued affordability here in the city. I'm, at this point, not sure of all the avenues that I can explore in relation to that, but I know that that's a concern for me. People who've grown up here, who've raised their families here, who've lived here all their life, they have a right to stay here, and they feel like they're being pushed out. And I would like the opportunity to work very hard with the mayor and the other members of the city council, to brainstorm, to come together with residents, and to see what we can do to keep that affordable. The other thing I think is really important, is an important issue with the people that I've talked with, is the, they're not really scared, but people are really worried about the water quality here in Northampton. It's been a long time coming down the road. They've been receiving these notices in the mail for a tremendous amount of time now. There's talk about the filtration plant going to Williamsburg, some problems with that, the increasing cost. People are concerned about where the money's going to come from for that plant and how the city itself is going to correct the issue. So those are the two top things I would like to work on.
I'm going to take a question from the audience. Kathy, you would be answering the next question first, and this actually was addressed to candidate Silva, but it's a question that can be answered by both. So Kathy, I'm going to state the question. What is your, what in your experience would convince the voters that you are the best qualified candidate?
Well, as I've stated all along, I don't have any political experience. This would be my very first political office. But I'm an honest and dedicated individual. I'm very hardworking, and I really care about people. I'm a very hands-on individual. Just for an example, there was a lady down the street whose husband passed away recently, and I've been mowing her lawn all winter long, I mean, all summer long, because she didn't know how to use a lawn mower. So I'm a very hands-on person. I'm accessible, you can call me. I'll go to people's houses, I'll help them resolve whatever issue it is that they need to resolve. I'll listen, and I'll bring forth their concerns, and I'll really be their voice. I'll really articulate for them what their concerns are, and I'll help resolve their issues by contacting whoever it is that I need to contact.
And David, we'll have you answer the same question.
I've been, over the last 20 years, appointed by three different mayors to different city committees and commissions to be involved in doing the city's business, and have spent the last nine years on the Board of Assessors. And I said, the wealth of knowledge you pick up from that position with regards to the tax base of the city, the budget of the city, where the money comes from, where the money's spent, is just phenomenal. And that would be tremendously useful in the first term for a city councillor to have that background and that experience.
And this is another question from the audience, and it was addressed to both candidates. And we have David answering first. What specific recommendations would you make concerning economic development in Northampton?
There certainly is interest in coming to the city of Northampton. We're not just a destination for people to want to come and live, but we've had inquiries from numbers of businesses to come here and to relocate. And the question is what constraints we put on them and how hard the city works with these businesses to make it possible for them to come and build the facilities that they need to settle into Northampton, provide jobs, and grow our tax base. I think at the Paradise City Forum, and I mentioned with regards to King Street, the saga of the Coca-Cola plant that turned into a hardware store, that turned into a CVS drugstore. Now, each one of those businesses was built under different zoning standards, and supposedly we've become real progressive with what King Street's supposed to look like, but nobody in that group could determine whether the Coke plant was better than the hardware store is better than the drugstore. We need to build out our available space on King Street to grow our tax base. And I think even in the strategic planning that went on here earlier, they refer to the fact that King Street from Stop &amp; Shop up to Damon Road intersection is intended for transitional, commercial properties. It's not going to compete with downtown. It's not going to be landmark buildings. The character of them are going to change, but they're going to fill the need at the time. They're going to grow our tax base, and I think we need to look at how changes in our zoning and planning make it more or less possible for these people to come to town and to build out. You know, that property there is key to our success, to our growing our tax base, and I think we need to be more flexible with what will allow businesses to come and put up there so that we can get growth, and we can get tax revenue, and we can get jobs.
And Kathy, what specific recommendations would you make concerning economic development in Northampton?
Well, I would try to work with the zoning boards and the planning boards and various other businesses in the area to try to spearhead, brainstorm, and come up with some ideas on how do we bring businesses into the city. I know for me, as far as Florence goes, there's not that many buildings or storefronts that are not utilized in that area. And as far as that goes, I would work directly with the Florence Civic Association, Mike Flynn and the other gentlemen that work on the, in the Civic Association, to see what they would recommend would be the best solutions. I'm not a business owner, so I would have to seek information from people that I felt would have that kind of information, and that would be some of the business owners. I would try to get them to come to some of the meetings and maybe share their concerns and their opinions, and if not, I would be happy to bring that forward. And then maybe, together collectively, we could all sit down and come up with some way to bring businesses back into this city.
Next question, and Kathy, you'll answer first. What would you like Florence Center to look like 10 years from now?
Well, that's hard for me to imagine that, because I would want it to look like what it looks like now. I wouldn't want to make any changes, really, and when I think of changes, I think of, like, new buildings, like a new look, like the new one on Elm Street, the Smith Building, the one that they just put up, because it kind of looks out of place. I would want Florence to stay pretty much the way it looks now. I would keep, I would, you know, keep the parking spaces free, not charge for parking. I wouldn't want any more development in the center of Florence itself, but if they wanted to develop going on the outskirts, if they needed to put in more SROs or some other housing, affordable housing, or something like that, then I'm sure we could work something out. But in the center itself, I think that there's already enough congestion and enough traffic going through there that I wouldn't want to see any more development within the city. I'm really kind of concerned about the traffic that's going to come in from the West Building and from the new condominiums that are now going up in that building where Subway is. So I'll have to wait and see how much traffic that brings in, but as far as the look of it, I would like it pretty much to stay the way it is now.
And David?
Well, I'm actually excited about the changes that are going on in Florence right now. I think certainly, from the exterior, the changes to the West Building are spectacular. If you've been by that, it looks, I think, from the outside, looks wonderful. And there's two storefronts there that will offer the opportunity for new businesses to come to Florence Center. Bob Gudgen has been doing a lot of work to the old International Silver Company building and bringing that online to bring some more retail business there. I think the building that the Northampton Cooperative Bank put up is a real advantage to Florence. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. Cumberland Farms is set to redevelop its building. They just did a building over in Williamsburg on Route 9. I think people would agree that's a real improvement. Cumberland Farms is going to look to do something to their building. The condominiums Kathy's talking about in the old Everybody's Building, they are redoing multi-level condominiums on the second floor, and I think will eventually get to do the facade on the first floor, which will be a real improvement to Florence Center. So I think what's going on there is good and it's positive. I agree with Kathy. I don't want to see any parking meters in Florence Center. And I do have some concern that when the over 20 residential units upstairs in the West Building come online, those people are going to have automobiles. That building has no parking. So I do foresee at some point in time, we're going to have to work on parking for the residents of that building somewhere in Florence Center. But all in all, I think the changes that have been happening there are positive. The move of Murdochs across the street and refurbishing going into that store opens more opportunities. So Florence is changing, in my opinion, in a positive way. The Norwood Manufacturing Company has got some development going on there. So all in all, I think Florence is very vibrant right at the moment, and what's going on there, the changes that are being made, are very, very positive, and will make Florence an even better place.
And David, you'll answer this question first. What, if any, is your position on the Community Preservation Act?
I'm personally going to vote for the CPA, for a couple of different reasons. I've been very involved in both the Elm Street Historic and Downtown Architectural District, and am keenly aware of the heritage we have in Northampton and how important it would be to protect that. People have talked a lot recently about the moving of the house from Bridge Street over to Dewey Court. The Historic Commission was at its wits' end trying to find something to do with that building, but they had no resources, so it ended up getting moved over there. If they'd had resources, maybe there would have been other options for that building. So I'm concerned that the heritage of the city I grew up in can be at risk, and the Historic Commission has no funds to do anything about it to help protect it. I'm also concerned about the way people deal with the catch-all phrase sprawl. I would hate to see people of my parents' generation that live in the outskirts of Northampton, that own tracts of land that have paid taxes on them for years, have the development rights and therefore the value of their property is taken away without compensation. But at the moment, the only way somebody can realize the value of their property is to actually develop it, because there's no money to pay them to keep it out of development. And that's something else CPA would fund. If you wanted to retire, sell your nest egg, and it had developable land, the only way to generate that money now is to sell it to developer. CPA, you wouldn't necessarily need to do that. And also, the affordable housing component isn't subsidized housing, it's affordable. And I think if you look at the salaries made by the people who work for the city of Northampton, they can't afford to live here anymore, and I think we have to keep an eye on that. Now, with all of this, it's another, it's a separate valid question. Everybody gets to vote for it or against it as they see fit. I'm going to vote for it, but I certainly understand, particularly with the seniors in Northampton, if they don't feel in their own personal financial reality they can vote for it, they shouldn't, and they shouldn't be embarrassed about that or feel bad about that. If you can't afford it, if it's either heat your house or vote no, feel free to vote no. Don't worry about that. It's important you take care of yourselves and your safety and your health first.
And Kathy?
As far as the CPA goes, I'm really concerned about people's ability to afford to live here. With the additional cost of heating their homes this year, with the additional fees on everything because of what's going on with the oil, the increase in food, the increase in transportation to bring the food, I'm really concerned about its impact on people. I have an honest fear that people are going to have to decide between heating their home, keeping their home warm or at a lower temperature, and eating. And I have a real fear about that. So for me, I am not supporting the CPA, because it's another tax burden on people.
And Kathy, you'll answer the next question. And this, there were two questions that were written by the audience, and they're very similar, so I'm going to read it, and it's addressed to you, Kathy. At the previous forum, the candidates were asked which mayoral candidate they support. Ms. Silva said that she hadn't yet decided. Has she reached a decision, and if not, when could a decision or an announcement come forward?
I have not reached a decision as to who I'm voting for at this time for a mayoral candidate. I have had previous conversations since that time with Mr. Feldman around some issues. I needed some explaining. He has attended, he was asked to attend a meeting that I was also asked to attend, where he was asked questions. I listened to the responses that he had, and I have also had some conversations with the mayor around some concerns I had. So as of this time, I do not have an answer for that question, and I do not know when I'll have it. I still am seeking out the information that I need to get an answer for.
And David, do you have, I'm sorry, will you finish, Kathy?
Yes.
About mayoral support?
Well, I mentioned at the last forum that we had, that as economic development is really very important to me, I'm supporting Mr. Feldman because of the emphasis he's placed on that. And I mean no disrespect to the mayor, because I've worked with her both before she was mayor on committees and since she's been mayor as an assessor. And I think the thing she puts her mind to, she does a very good job at, and I have a lot of respect for her. But this, to me, is such an overwhelmingly important issue, and I haven't seen enough happening in that area, that I'm prepared to throw my lot in with Mr. Feldman based on the economic issue. So, but I did mention that at the last forum as well.
One short question.
A short one. Well, you have up to two minutes to respond. What are your thoughts on increasing or improving public transportation in our city, since it does go through Florence and Leeds?
Public transportation, or I guess, or alternative transportation, because a lot of what's come up is not necessarily, it seems to be alternatives to automobiles when people talk about transportation, if it's bicycles, if it's walking. And I'm very encouraged by the expansion of the bike path system. I think that's very important, though we must remember, it's seasonal and it often leaves out our seniors. One specific area, and I know this is of interest to you, is that now that the senior center is downtown, I'm very hopeful that there'll be good van service from both Tobin and Forsender Apartments down to the senior center, particularly when the weather's bad, because I know even some seniors who live there that drive are sometimes reluctant to drive when the weather's bad. And I know my mom likes very much going to the center and dropping in to do things, and I know the people up in Florence do as well in both of those housing complexes. So I hope that the vans run regularly so they can get there. Otherwise, it's primarily bus transportation, and I know PBTA's been having a very hard time with that. I'm hoping that as oil becomes more expensive and driving becomes less and less desirable, that that will pick up some. But it's really very difficult to do anything else in Northampton. I remember trains in Florence, but they don't run anymore. And when the weather's bad, walking and bicycling is tough, so I guess it's down to buses. But when the weather's nice, you see more and more bikes in town. The bike traffic by my house and through Smith is tremendous, and I hope we continue to develop the bikeways as an alternative for people to get in and around town, because I know I have to drive around town all day long for my job, and the congestion at certain times is very, 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 very tough at drive times at the traffic lanes.
Well, I'd like to, first of all, talk with the people that manage the PBTA bus route and see if they feel it's adequate, if there are enough stops, and if not, why, and if yes, why. And then I'd like to have a conversation with you, because being a volunteer escort shopper for the Council on Aging, I'm not sure if we could put another bus in, the kind that George drives, to help people get around, or if that's a feasible request or not. So that was a conversation that I was going to have with you at a later date. And then I'm concerned about the amount of transportation or the modes of transportation for people with disabilities. I don't feel that there's enough, and when I think of transportation, I think of small van-type buses, not big buses. I don't feel that there's enough small buses to get people with disabilities around in the city. At times, bus schedules are set up, they're set up, you know, as-is, and people have to accommodate their schedules for the transportation. And I'd like to kind of move it in a different direction, where we can maybe have smaller vans doing more frequent stops, more frequent pickups in more various locations for more people that would hopefully utilize them.
Thank you. That concludes our forum for candidates for city council, Ward 5. And good luck to you both.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And hopefully, we'll have our candidates for school committee come up next.
Change the linen?
Get this out of the way. Thanks for the sign.
Oh, you're very welcome.
But I really do want to have the conversation.
I think that...
Yes. How's Tim?
One more.
Because I don't think I've seen Tim since high school. Not at all.
There he is.
He's well, he's well. Enjoying his travels.
How's it going, Chris?
Always think they snuck out.
Wonderful. We saw you back there. Got the right name down for you?
I got the right name.
Good?
I thought I'd be getting funny looks if I was sitting behind the Margaret sign.
If it was Teddy, who would know?
If it was Teddy, that's right.
And yeah, Teddy goes first. All right.
Now, is this a low-carb fridge mix?
Actually, it's either blueberries or ginger.
Oh, really? I love those.
Trader Joe's.
Should I ask if there's any questions from the audience for Ward 3?
I don't think anybody's going to pay a whole lot of attention. It's like, there's no one.
Ate some diehards to stay, right?
I got one heard up.
Well, it's, the sound is working, so that's, they're good. Now, and we're going to tape it again. Yeah, I'm always willing to eat ginger. Ready? Okay. So if everybody in the back could just lower their voices, we're ready to begin again. This is... This is a forum for candidates for School Committee from Ward Three. And to my left is candidate Sam Wilson, and to his left is candidate Margaret Teddy Mill. And also, we have tonight Patty Shaughnessy from the Council on Aging. And as a result of a coin toss, Teddy will speak first. Tell us something about yourself.
I think it was the other way around.
Would you like to switch it? You won the toss.
I don't care. I won the toss, but I chose to go second.
Oh, then my apologies, Sam. What do you tell us?
I'll go first, sure. Want me to go first, Teddy? Okay. Good evening. Thank you, first, thank you to the Northampton Council on Aging and the League of Women's Voters for holding this forum and inviting me to participate. Thank you to the voters of Northampton, those who are here tonight, and those home watching on TV, now that it's working, and for taking the time to listen to me and the other candidates. My name is Sam Wilson, and I am a candidate for School Committee. I'm 48 years old. I have a wonderful wife named Sue, who's a middle school teacher in East Hampton, and a great son named Garrett, who's a seventh grade student right here at JFK Middle School. I was born in Northampton, grew up down in downtown, was educated in Northampton, and have lived in Northampton for all but a year or two of my life. I am truly looking forward to representing the residents of Ward Three if elected a few weeks from now. As a strong believer in representative government and as a father of a son in the school system, I believe that serving on the School Committee is perhaps one of the most important jobs in the city. Your votes will give me the opportunity to listen to the thoughts and concerns of other parents' work to prioritize the many needs to be addressed with our limited resources and bring many messages from Ward Three constituents to the committee to help ensure the best educational opportunities possible for their children and mine. Since announcing my candidacy, I've had many questions posed to me. Should teachers be paid better in order to retain the best possible teaching staff? Should old textbooks be replaced and updated regularly? Should money be spent on technology in the classrooms to make sure that our children graduate with the technological skills needed in today's world? What about language and arts and physical education and the many, many things that make our children's education so rich but are often the first targets of budgetary challenges? Shouldn't we be supporting them? The answer, of course, to all of these questions are yes, 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 and yes. We need to figure out ways to do it all or as much as we possibly can, but with limited funds. So, to do so, we need to be creative, to know how to make choices, to prioritize, and to deliver as much as possible without making devastating decisions. Because that's what running any organization is all about, making choices that suit the needs of our customers. In the case of school system, these customers are the students, the teachers, and administration, the parents, and the taxpayer, taxpayers. Identifying what the customer wants and figuring out how to give it to them, that's what the School Committee job that I'm running for is all about, and that's what I know how to do best. As a business owner for many years, day in and day out, I listened to what customers wanted and I delivered. At UMass, where I have worked for 15 years, that's what I do as senior manager of administrative mail and print and distribution services for the campus. I listen to what customers want, and I deliver. Soon, I hope to be listening to what other parents want from their schools and working with my colleagues on the School Committee to deliver. Please give me your vote. Thank you. And if I could just add one thing, please take a look at my website, which is www.vowellson.com, which my son Garrett and I had a lot of fun building. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters in the Council on Aging, too, everybody else has, for this opportunity to speak to you. I'm Teddy Mill, and I'm running for School Committee from Ward Three. My three sons attended Northampton Public Schools. I've taught school, and I covered the school department as a Gazette reporter. I've been in Northampton a long time, not only working at Northampton School for Girls in the Gazette, but also owning a Main Street store, Greetings, and running my own small publishing business. At the moment, I'm interested mainly in three things: making school a positive experience for our kids, making sure every student and every teacher feels respected, and maintaining a well-rounded curriculum that includes music and art. I feel that these are not hurdles but are necessary for a well-rounded education and a well-rounded life. I've been impressed by the present school administration and School Committee for their care and ingenuity during hard financial times, and by parents and others in the community who have worked as volunteers, raised funds, and worked to address such problems as racial injustice and special education needs. I was handing out flyers the other day, and one woman handed it back and said, "I don't have any children." So, I think we may need to do a little more public relations work to remind people that education is a big factor in the kind of community we live in. If our children grow up to be responsible, informed citizens, won't our community be better off than if our kids are dropouts who have given up on their future? Not only that, good schools are an often-named factor when young couples choose where they want to live. Do we want to attract that kind of thoughtful population, or don't we care? I need to say that I'll be on the ballot as Margaret Mill, although I'm better known as Teddy Mill, from the column I wrote for the Gazette for 14 years. I'd like to ask you for your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
And Teddy, we'll have you answer the first question.
If I can.
Would you support school choice if elected, and why or why not?
Well, I've been thinking, I wonder if it's possible to lobby the state government to get some changes made in that law because at present, the people who are making the school choice get to pick which school, and that means that some of our schools become overcrowded and have larger-than-usual class size. And I think I would support school choice if we could get that changed so that we tell the chooser which school they're going to put their children in, so that we don't end up with an imbalance, 16 kids in one classroom and 26 in another.
Well, you know, a few of friends I have who are in politics, and boy, avoid school
choice question if you can because that's the third rail of school committee politics right now. You know, people who have opinions on it sure do seem to have strong opinions one way or the other. And I have to tell you, my, my personal opinion is that, is that anything that has the word "choice" in it and offers educational opportunities for people has to, has to have some goodness behind it, you know, at the very basis. So, you know, I look at school choice and I say, I think school choice, certainly the concept is a good thing. You know, not everybody fits in the same place in the same way, and it gives people an opportunity to, to fit in their best educational environment. The problem with school choice really isn't school choice, it's the funding and the way that school makes us deal with funding and the imbalances that could, that could be caused as a result of, of choice. And I think, you know, even though it's been around for a few years, there's still a newness to it that administrators and school committees haven't quite gotten down yet. But I think in the long run, I think five, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, we're going to look back and say, "School choice was, was not such a horrible thing after, after all." And, you know, I think I would try and work very hard to, to try and make what is there work because it's really not up to the School Committee whether or not school choice is going to be there. School choice is, is here, it's just a matter of how to manage it.
And Sammy, you'll answer this question first. What do you see as the most important priority facing the schools, and if you could be specific?
Well, you know, I've thought about that, and I obviously suspected I'd get a question or word or someone like that. And it's pretty hard when you're not within a system and to, to really know what the burning questions are from the inside, what the number one priority is. So, I have to dodge that slightly by saying that, that I think I could talk a little bit on a more global basis, which is maybe less specific than what you're saying, and that what I hear on the street all the time is that we have pretty good schools. As a matter of fact, we probably have much better than pretty good schools, but there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect between the schools and the communities. I mean, I think we're very blessed. If you look around, the buildings are beautiful, we, we enjoy pretty high grades, we have good teachers, there's lots of good things that going on, go on in our schools, and pretty much good educations coming out of the schools. But they don't fit into the community as well as they do. I think I talked to parents and any, even other School Committee people who, who feel a frustration that there just could be better communication. And I was very happy to see at a recent meeting that, that the principal of the school is working very aggressively on some community-based programs, and, you know, hopefully that's going on throughout the system. And as, as a School Committee person, I would be able to perpetuate, perpetuate that, really make the resources of the school more accessible to the city, make the, even the people who don't have students in the system understand the value of the schools to the city.
Well, I think I'd really have to wait and see because we have a fairly new superintendent of schools, we have some new principals, and they're doing wonderful things. I'm really very impressed by what they're doing, and I think it's not a, just, it's not feasible right now to say the schools need this and that because people are working on so many things in the school system. So, I'd like to wait and see.
Thank you. And Teddy, we'll start with you with this question. How would you look at the budget differently? That's one of the big roles of a School Committee person.
Well, one of the questions I've been trying to get the answer to is, where does the, are there statistics about various communities in the state or in the region that have a certain percentage of the school, what percentage of the, of the city budget is the school budget, and how do we stack up in that, in that continuum? And if we are spending less than other communities on education, I'd certainly want to look into that, and if we're spending more, that would be good. I, I think, you know, budget is, is something the whole city has to deal with, and there is a matter of priorities, as I've said before, that maybe the school department needs more money than the city has been allowing it to have. And this is something that needs to be worked out among all the different departments. You can't just say, "Well, we're going to take more money." You have to work it out. So, guess I'd have to see.
I, I believe the way the question was worded was, "How would you do it differently?" And I don't know if I could really speak to differently because not being on the committee right now, you know, I don't, I don't know exactly how, what the workflow is to getting the budget done and out there. But, but I will say this, that, that I think, you know, the role of the School Committee members really is more of a spending role than a raising role or a funding role because, you know, once the lobbying is done and the numbers are set, you know, the amount of money that's out there is the amount of money that's out there, and there, there aren't a whole lot of opportunities for changing that. So, I think the emphasis really has to be on managing the expenditures of the money just, just because that's really where the bigger opportunities for committee people to be effective lie. That's, that's where they can, where they can really do things. If you look at that, you know, the vast majority of any budget is, is, you know, by payroll, by teachers, administrators, et cetera. And I think, you know, there's some shifting around of that kind of money, of those resources to be done by the administrators, the principals, and the superintendents. But the balance of the money that, that isn't spoken for, I think, is best spent in, by schools, by any organization, by pushing that responsibility as far down as possible to the people who really need it. And I think, you know, if you have a good organization, which we do, you know, you put that money out there for the, the teachers and the work groups and the school principals and administrators to work with, to really set the priorities and bring those recommendations back up through the chain to the, to the committee. I think you'll find that money gets spent better that way. That's certainly my experience at UMass, which is a, you know, very similar funding mechanism, and, and I think in any big organization, that's true. You know, give, give some responsibility and some ownership of the process to the people who are really affected by it on a day-to-day basis.
To go along with budgets, the School Committee has just received a windfall of $4.5 million. What would you see as the direction for that money to be used? What would you formulate as a plan for that money?
Well, I'm quite a little bit off-guard by that, but I, let me say this. First of all, depending on the, on the ability to do so, and I don't fully understand the, the cash flow opportunities within, within the municipal budget arena, I understand them very well at UMass and, you know, for state institutions, but I just haven't worked in the city well enough to know them. But if there are opportunities to set some of that money aside, you know, that's, that's certainly something we should be looking at. You know, we've spent down some of our reserves in the last few years where the budgets have been particularly difficult, and having some, some money there for when things come up is always a good thing. So, I would say taking a large part of that, I don't know what, what a large part would be, but as, as much as possible to do that and using the rest just for the really glaring immediate needs. You know, some of the, you know, there's need to maybe some, some additional teachers for some of the class overcrowding. You know, we might be a little bit too far into the school year to deal with that at this point, but, you know, different things like that. But just because we have a lot of money to spend it is, is not always a good thing.
Thank you, Teddy.
Well, I think I'd convene a community-wide question and answer session or panel to discuss what to do with the money because I think the community might have some good ideas about what we could do. I've wondered whether the business community could make suggestions about classes that would be more pertinent to real life, to job work and, and things like that. And there might be some others that have a plan for a music center or something like that. So, I think if the whole community worked on it and came together, it would not only benefit the schools, but the community would be more excited about what was going on.
Thank you. And Teddy, you'll answer this question first. What thoughts do you have on the role of the required school councils?
The required school councils?
Yes.
What does that mean?
Each, each school has a school council, which is represented by parents, teachers, students, and community members.
Well, that sounds good. I didn't know about that, I'm afraid to say. What, what, what were you asking about? What their role is?
What, what your thoughts are about the, the role of the school council. You're saying it's a good idea.
Well, anything that includes the community, I think, is a good idea. I'm, I'm sure it's a source of some friction also, usually is. But I think that any, any department that has a chance to involve the community is, is better off in the long run because the community has to be behind you. And if, if you don't include the community, they're not going to be behind you. So, I think this is a good idea.
Thank you. Sam?
You know, I, I don't know if the way the councils are, are structured right now are good or bad or controversial, or if they're effective or not. So, I, I, I can't comment on, on whether there should be changes to the, you know, what those changes should actually be. But I have to agree with Teddy, and I would think with most people that, you know, communication is a good thing. You know, if the council happens to be the mechanism out there for, that, that works for people to be able to get their ideas into the, into the school and to hear what's going on and to exchange information, great, then, then they're great the way they are. If, if that's the mechanism and there's problems with them that need to be fixed, then, then fix those problems and we're back to great. But certainly, any, anything that increases communication is, is a good thing.
We can go one more if you have any. Yes. And this is a part of the school council. You both had expressed that communication's very important. How would you get the community to recognize the importance of schools? And school councils probably are one way to do that. Do you have any other thoughts on the recognition of the community and the schools?
Is that to me first?
It is to you first, yeah.
I, I think that the schools really have to, have to make part of their regular-day operations some community outreach programs. And I know that there are some, and I know that the ones that, that I've heard about are very effect, very effective. But I don't know that people who don't have kids in school, who don't have particular concerns are going to necessarily come into the school systems to learn what it's all about. But I think if schools have opportunities to reach out into the community and to, you know, reach out to constituents, not only in, in a way to promote what they're doing, but through offerings. You know, I know there was a program Garrett was very excited about last year where they were working with seniors on computer, computer skills for some of the kids. You know, that kind of thing is great here. We have skills here, we have resources that we can share with the community, and the community's naturally going to come into the schools as a result of that and, you know, get an understanding and partnerships get forged that way.
Yeah, I, I mentioned before the value of public relations, and I think, you know, there could easily be a series of stories about different school projects. There's such a lot going on.
And the community's naturally going to come into the schools as a result of that and, you know, get an understanding and partnerships can forge that way.
Yeah, I mentioned before the value of public relations. And I think, you know, there could easily be a series of stories about different school projects. There's such a lot going on. If you went to a school committee last month, they had, or two months ago, I guess it was, they had the principal of the, of this school mentioning all the things that they were doing. And, you know, there should be more coverage of that in the Gazette. And if the Gazette can't afford to send somebody out all the time, then maybe some of the people on this advisory council can do it. But I think there are a lot of things that get people interested in the schools. And just seeing children's happy faces is one good way. If you brought anybody into a kindergarten class, they would be in favor of anything the school wanted, I'm sure. So public relations is a big thing.
Well, thank you very much. That concludes our forum for candidates for School Committee from Ward 3. And I wish you both the best of luck.
Thank you.
We can't all be lucky. Thank you.
All the best. And I'd like to say good night to our audience. I'd like to thank everybody who came, and thank the cable company and David Burfee for fixing the sound, and the Northampton Council on Aging, and members of the League who've come to help with the timing tonight. And just want to encourage you all to turn out on November 8th between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 and vote for candidates and for the ballot questions. And good evening.
Thank you. You both had wonderful answers. I'll call, I'll call.